But these are one and four.
Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. Monday, October 19th. First item on the agenda is an approval not required for Jenks, Costanci on John Street. Ask the Town Planner to give us the information on this, please.
Sure. So this... This is a pretty simple A&R. It is 19 and 21 John Street, and 19 is granting a parcel, Parcel A to 21. And on it, you'll see it's really to accommodate the relocation of a shed. And I guess you can talk a little bit about that. I think a shed was on someone else's property, so they're moving it and doing a lot line change.
So we'll put that...
If you want to come up and...
Put that in front of Kathy, yeah?
Here. That mine or down, if you'd like. And... You got me, it's not going to come around. And... Come around, or how about you come around? I do not have a home, you know. So you can see 19 and 21 is here, the shed is here.
Can you hear it?
House 19, house 21, there's a shed that is here that's going to be removed and relocated.
Is that...
Is it still here?
Because this mic is like right here, under her mouth.
Yeah, try, just bend it your...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that way.
Okay. So this is number 19 and number 21, John Street. There's a shed here that's going to be removed and located, relocated here.
Close. There's actually two sheds.
Oh, okay.
Yep, there's, there's two sheds.
I assumed it was getting relocated.
Nope, it's not. This is 21's shed is currently on 19 John Street's land.
Oh, okay.
So what I'm doing is transferring this rectangle of land.
Yep.
This is the existing property line. We've restaked it here, so that way this side yard will be part of 21.
Gotcha.
And that way the shed is on this property where it should be. And there's a natural divide of a set of trees that you can't see here that is right on this line. So this is grass on the side.
Okay.
My head was down.
My head was down. Are you going to end up with a same-sized lot because he's giving you some land for that which you're giving to him?
No, my lot will be smaller.
Okay. Okay. You're willing to do that?
And it's still...
Oh, yes.
And it's still 1.71 acres.
No, no problem. But just usually it's a land swap to solve these things.
Yep, no.
Jesse? So...
Just one more time. Can you just draw with your finger the existing lot line relative to the new lot line?
Yep. So this is the existing lot line right here for part of 19. That's 21 shed. It exists there today. And the new lot line is about 15 feet over this direction, and it will be right here. So that way, this side yard and this shed will all be part of 21.
It seems pretty straightforward to me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the A&R.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can, um, we can sign these at the end of the night if you want, or if you want to sign them now, whatever's...
No, let's do it. Let's do it. We'll keep things moving.
Okay, great. So you can come by tomorrow, I guess. Hillary will record it with the...
Keep it moving or side down?
Yeah, no, keep it moving.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Fitzgerald's A&R. That's at 7:15.
We can, and that's really just signing it from the last approval, so we can do that after. We can jump to the next one.
Uh, Flag Road, but that's not, not on until 7:30. Let's do the Planner's Report or the minutes.
How about Stone Brook?
Oh, we could do Stone Brook.
I'm recused from Stone Brook.
Signing of Stone Brook.
Stone Brook was, um...
Majority vote?
This was already approved, so it was just signing the, the plans. Oh, because you weren't on originally, or just recusing?
I have not set eyes on it whatsoever.
Well, my point is that if someone needs to make a motion to do this...
What the Board did at the...
Right. We did it, and there was going to be a review by the Chair.
Right.
Didn't the Chair find that it was a different...
And we have the plans tonight, so either we can review it here, or Don can just come to my office and review it like he did last time. I just had it on the agenda because we received them to review and to make it efficient to sign.
What we, uh, what we told, um, the developer and the neighbors was that when the appropriate plan was delivered to the Planning Department, that I would review it and, um, and then I would sign it and ask the other applicable members to come in and sign it, um, at, at their convenience. So last week I came in, and I spent almost an hour going over the plans that were submitted, only to find out that they weren't the right plans. So through the Town Planner, we contacted the engineer, and that's essentially the note that we have here in front of us, where, um, they did locate a paper copy of the August 20th plan, and then they, from that, they reprinted the new Mylar. And as of Friday, when I checked in, uh, at 11 o'clock on Friday, uh, they hadn't been delivered. So they got delivered today. So we'll do the same thing. I'll come in and review them, and then notify the rest of the Board if, if I sign them, and if they're, if I, if they're free to then sign them. So that takes, as far as I'm concerned, that takes care of that item. And it's, it's another lesson of making sure that we have the right plans in front of us that match up with the actions that the Board did. Despite being told otherwise, we, uh, we wound up having it be the right thing, or on the, on the road to being the right thing. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to another item.
Sure. Um, we can do the minutes if you'd like.
Yep.
Mrs. Bartolini.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, actually left this meeting at about 8:45 PM that night. So what is the... How does that affect my ability to accept these minutes? If you look at page two of the minutes on line 109 and 107.
What time did you leave, Jesse?
I think it was about 8:45 PM.
Yeah, yeah.
The meeting reconvened at 8:48, and the rest of the, from line 111 on page two onward, I wasn't actually physically present.
We were thinking about you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that these get tabled to our next meeting.
I agree. Thank you. Um, we still have 15 minutes before the next agenda item.
I have material.
So, okay.
All right. Let me just go...
Bruce, is it just you tonight, or you have others coming? Okay. Nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong with just you.
Our next meeting was 11:33, or no, 11:02?
Two.
Okay. We have, um, the Isabella Covenant. I had Town Council...
I must recuse myself.
Okay. I had Town Council review this, and there was a few comments on it, which the developer addressed. Let me just pull it out here. Typically, this would just be signed by the Chairman, but I did put it on the agenda. Um... So the first one was making sure that there was a... Here it is. I apologize. Making sure that we had a signature from a corporation, which we do have now. The other concern that Town Council had was the completion of the project. The developer had five years in it. Town Council said it should be consistent with what other covenants were, so we had pulled previous covenants, and they're all two years. So the developer did come in with a revised covenant today, changing it to two years.
Is the, is the revised covenant in our packet someplace?
No, because I just got that, received that today. So the only change from your, the covenant, is the change from five to two. And then there is a copy of the Certificate of Vote that was provided on Friday. So that's just a signature page, and the only change in the covenant, again, is the five to two. The other item that Town Council brought up was the policy of requiring something other than a covenant, a bond. And looking back at all of the subdivisions, or the last three or four subdivisions, we've only held a covenant. So a covenant, Jesse, just so you have an understanding, a covenant is a way that a developer does not get any of the lots until all of the infrastructure, the road, this drainage, is completed. If they want a lot release prior to that completion, they would come before the Board and request a lot release, and then the Board typically would require, we would do an estimate, have Fussin' O'Neil do an estimate, and then they would be required to post surety. So we've never required a bond or any form of surety other than the covenant at this point in the, the process. And Don, I don't know if you have any comments on that?
So how does this, how's this different than, like, for example, uh, what comes to mind, the subdivision that Chuck Black did? Like, was there a covenant at one point in that process?
Yes. Yep. So they would have posted a covenant, and I do have them in here as examples. So early on, they, um, post a covenant, gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. None of the lots can be conveyed, so the developer can't sell any of the lots. And they have to put in the infrastructure. At a certain point during that process, if they want to start conveying the lots, um, they have to come before the Board and ask for a lot release, and then post surety. That's typically how the process has been. Okay? So you haven't had anything since the beginning, since I've been here. Everything's all been in the process. Nor have you gone through that yet. You've always been... Don, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that, or...
No. Your, uh, your overview, I agree with. And I actually, while on the phone with Town Council several weeks ago on another matter, um, he, uh, he and I went over this Isabella Covenant. So, uh, this is consistent with what he told me that he was going to recommend or advise on. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with this, but, um... How many signatures do we need on that?
Well, typically, it's been... Let's see.
The whole board, right?
The whole board's on it, but I'm looking at ones that have been recorded, and they haven't even got, received the, um, Planning Board's signature, which...
Oh, they just weren't in those packets, right?
Right. I would advise to at least have the Planning Board Chair's signature, but there is, I've asked them to provide a signature block, which they have done.
Yeah, I, I think that the, you know, as many Board members sign it as possible, so it's not boiling down to one person.
Mr. Chairman, am I, am I understanding this correctly, that in this case, developer owner has proposed that the security be by covenant alone? Is that meant for the duration of the project?
Let me, let me back up. It's only, so the developer can either, one, put in all of the infrastructure that's required, the road, the drainage, and not request any lot, lots. Once he has completed it, then he can automatically get his lots conveyed to him. Okay? However, if during that process, he hasn't completed at 100%, because there, you know, a lot of times they put the drainage in at the end, they do the top coat, et cetera, at the end, but they want to start building and conveying lots, they'll come in and request a, a release of, you know, a couple lots in the beginning, and then they have to post a bond. And we establish that bond, so they have to come back before, to the Planning Board and request that release. We have Fussin' O'Neil determine what it would cost to complete the project, and then they have to post surety.
So why has the developer, in this case, gone out of his way, so to speak, to request that security be by covenant alone?
Because he...
If it's the normal course of the process?
Because they're supposed to do this at the, um, beginning of the project, when they're, um, before they do construction. This is part of the process. They have to put a covenant in place. It protects, protects the town and protects, um, people that are potentially purchasing it. It's a way of ensuring that the infrastructure will be completed.
Right. No, I understand that, but I'm wondering why he, that he specified this. It seems like the language in this document is very specific, that in this case, he's requesting...
Requesting...
Security by covenant alone.
That's because that's...
So if, it's not clear to me why he would go the extra step of requesting that.
Because I think a lot of them want to do that in the beginning, because to, for a Board to hold, um, just to hold the lots, that's typically what they do. If you look back at, like, I've pulled Deerfoot, Heritage, Crossing, and Reservoir Estates, that's what they do. They have the town hold the lots, meaning you can't release them, and that ensures that the infrastructure is put in place. Because if they were going to go out and get surety, it could be $2 million to complete the road and, and infrastructure.
It's a very good question, Mr. Stein. I think the way the Town Planner has explained it, that, um, it's, it's the covenant and not anything in addition, until we get to the point where she just described. So are you recommending that we sign?
I am recommending that you sign.
So that would be Jesse and myself tonight?
Yes.
But that has blanks.
Does it require a vote?
Um, I don't think it does, because typically, it's just part of the subdivision process.
Okay. Because when we spoke on the phone, you said we wouldn't be able to act on it, because only three were present.
Well, I didn't, right.
And I wasn't eligible to vote, so...
But I think that was act on it, because there was going to be potential changes of if he was going to be requesting five, and then normally is two, and if there were going to be any other votes. But this is standard language. It's just part of, uh...
I shouldn't do this, but I'm going to ask the question. You mentioned it, you mentioned that you amended the covenant to reflect the suggested amendments by Town Council. Correct?
I didn't do it. Council, when he reviewed it, highlighted those areas that he thought should be revised.
Right.
And asked me if, asked me my opinion regarding that, and I agreed with him, that the, for example, the five-year, uh, number was different than what we usually do, which is...
The purpose of expediting and not repeating, in turn, was the applicant made aware that those changes had been made, and he agrees to those changes?
Yes. I didn't, I did not make the changes. I explained this to the developer, Town Council's recommendation from five to two, and said that this was going to be discussed at the Planning Board meeting tonight, and if he wanted to come and go before them to request that, he said, "No, I'll just change it to two." He brought in this revised...
Because I shouldn't have even asked that question.
Yeah, no, but this is...
But I felt that I wanted to, because there's so many things not moving forward tonight because of attendance, that...
Right.
I didn't want us to do something, thinking it was going forward, to find out that we didn't have the developer's agreement.
No, and this, and I think you're fine, Kathy, asking. It's administrative. But I did speak with the developer on Friday.
You shouldn't have been in the room while you...
And then he came in today and brought that in, and also provided, um, the, uh, the vote of corp, the corporate vote, the Certificate of Corporate Vote. So it's administrative what you're doing tonight.
For those who want to know why I'm recused, I am recused because I am in a butter to in a butter relative to this project.
So my recommendation would be that the Board sign this. This is administrative, and that's why I had it under my planning. Okay.
So toward the end of this meeting, we'll have that, uh, session on signing all these things that are stacked up at the end of the table.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Another two minutes. So what I'd like to do is, um...
No, we still have 7:15. We haven't started. We're behind now. We went from being ahead to being behind. 7:15 was Fitzgerald's, 7:30 is...
And, and that's...
No, we said we were going to sign Fitzgerald's at, at the end.
That's just signing. The Board has already voted on it.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. What are you, which one are you here for? Oh, he's Flag Road.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, in the minute and a half that we have, I'd like to, um, thank Mrs. Bartolini. Most people would, would never know the type of, uh, work that she does quietly. What was it, last week, the week before? She, Mrs. Bartolini was quite sick, and, but we needed to go over a few things, so she allowed me to knock on her door, come into her sick house, and spent...
Make sure.
We spent almost an hour, while you were ill, going over the stuff that we, to keep things moving. And that's the type of, you know, public servant, public elected official that, uh, you know, the town should recognize and be grateful to. I know I am, and it helped me a lot to be able to do that. So thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you. You need to bring it up.
Well, if you weren't sick, I wouldn't have, but...
Because I'm so sick, you mean?
If you, if you weren't sick, you would, probably would have met me here at the Town Hall, like, usually. But letting me come into your home and disrupt your illness was much appreciated. See, it's now 7:30. So next item on the agenda is an approval not required, Flag Road. Have the Town Planner, you want to set up, are you going to set up, Bruce?
For the record, my name is Bruce Salak.
Hold on. I'm just going to let you set up. She's going to speak now.
Okay.
Yeah. Were you going to put up the, yeah?
So this property is located on Flag Road. Properties are currently in Land Court. This is a land swap for 15 Flag Road, which is granting Lot 1B, which is unbuildable, to Number 2 Strawberry Hill Road. And I'll let Bruce go into it, because it really, um, is something that's being addressed in, in Land Court right now, so...
So Bruce, you got to grab a mic.
Okay. For the record, my name is Bruce Salak from Bruce Salak and Associates, and I hear informally prior, you know, pre-application submittal, to explain the two A&R's that we have before us. They're adjacent properties, and the reason I felt that it was a good idea to come in formally, because it is kind of complicated, and it has to do with registered land and recorded land, and the same, two, two pieces of property. Um, the, and also, because it's Land Court, it makes it a little more complicated, because they require a certain media, and I wanted to get any comments that the Board wanted to see, or notes on, on the plan that the Board wanted to see, before we sent it down to Boston to have the media prepared for signatures, because it's, it's kind of a special process they use for Land Court. So the piece of land is located, there are two, two A&Rs. One is at 15 Flag Road, which is this larger piece. It's approximately five acres. And we, it's, it was last surveyed in 1915, recorded at Land Court. And we had done a retracement survey on that, um, and updated the Land Court portion of the property, and had that vetted by Land Court people, and they've now accepted the definition of the, of this five plus or minus acre lot here as the bounds, and accepted that. And they're ready to, to, to record it at Land Court. Um, they, um, we let them know that we're going to, to subdivide it, create another parcel here. And what's going to happen is the butter to this larger piece is located at 2 Strawberry Hill Road, and this butter would like to swap land with this piece of Land Court. So the butter piece at Strawberry Hill Road is recorded land, and this is, this piece is registered land. And so what they'd like to do is get a piece of land right behind our house. The house is shown here. They have virtually, it's, it's almost like a remnant lot, and they have, they really don't have much of a backyard. So what they'll get is a bigger backyard, and what this, this developer will get is additional frontage, frontage on Strawberry Hill Road, which will allow them to create a second lot. So they both get something out of the swap here. And so the, we are required to create two, two A&R plans, because, uh, you may know that, um, land, that this piece of land here, for example, even though we're showing it for descriptive purposes, cannot be used for conveyance in Land Court, and vice versa. You cannot convey a piece of land that's shown as recorded land in a Land Court transaction. So we have two, two pieces of land to show the swap. So this, this piece, this plan will go to Land Court. And a second, um, A&R plan is recorded land, which is, here's Strawberry Hill Road, here's Flag Road, here's that larger piece. So this is a larger scale plan. So this is, we're looking at Strawberry Hill Road. So this is the swap out that goes to the owner of the Land Court piece. So he will, the Land Court owner will then have recorded land here on Strawberry Hill Road, this little triangle, and he'll also have registered land in the back. Essentially, two parcels of land here. And likewise, the owner on Strawberry, 2 Strawberry Hill Road will have recorded land, and then he will also own this piece back here, which is about three times as large as what they gave up. own this piece back here, which is about three times as large as what they gave up to get a better backyard. And that's registered land. So essentially, they will have a second parcel here. And at some future point in time, we'll be back in to create a second parcel out of the additional frontage that we're creating on Flag Road here and Strawberry Hill Road. The, it's up to the, the owner of this piece of land how they want to, if they want to consolidate this lot or not to consolidate the lot. Likewise, with the registered land, you can, this can be consolidated, and it could be also withdrawn from Land Court if they so choose to withdraw it from Land Court. Same here goes here. They can withdraw this piece if they want to. It's a simpler process once it's been just recorded and it's a fresh plan. And also, if you own partial, you have, if you have land that's partly recorded and partly Land Court land, it's very, it's an easy process to, to withdraw at that point. It's a lot easier than withdrawing if you have all Land Court land. So the, we put the notes on a plan, kind of explaining, for example, this board will be signing this plan, but it'll have nothing to do with this piece here. And we put a note there that this, this lot here that's shown here is for descriptive purposes, and the purpose of the signatures is not gonna be for creation of this lot because it can't. It's, you cannot create a lot on a recorded piece that's shown here in Land Court and sent it into the registry because it just doesn't happen. But we're just showing it because we have, there are two owners, and for their purposes, they know that, okay, this, this is here and this is gonna happen, and we're just showing that for their purposes only. There's a good purpose also for everybody else to see what's happening on the swap. But at the same time, explaining to them that this, this A and R plan is just for these two pieces. And likewise, going over to the registered side, this A and R plan is just for this piece here, for these two pieces over here. And so we, we put some explanatory notation on the plan, just to make sure that everybody understands the purpose and why we're doing it and why we have two plans. So I welcome any, any comments or requests from the board before we make the final application back to the board.
I was just asking the town planner to what degree she's familiar with those things that you were describing. And she is, but I think we both came to the conclusion that at least between the town planner and myself, that you're the expert on this, Bruce. And so I'll open it up to the board, but it, it seems like, and when you said the media, you wanna make sure the plan is right because the media is, is special. And the media that you're talking about is essentially the paper.
That's right. It's, it's a treated paper, and it's, it's not just a Mylar. It's a special process of treatment. It's more permanent than the, the standard ink on a Mylar process.
So you wanna get it right the first time?
Yes. I wanna get if there's any notation of the board, because sometimes the boards will ask for a note underneath their signature, that sort of thing. So rather than going down to Boston, having all that done, bringing it up here and say, "Oh, by the way, we want the note done," then I back down to Boston and doing that process again. Rather, just make sure everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. And if there's any notes or notation, annotation on the plan that they'd like to see, you know, we'll take care of that explanatory annotation, you know, we'll add that to the plan as well. And then we'll go down to Boston. Because that media is a special media, and that's the Land Court media, not the, the one that goes to, to recorded land.
Well, I know from my point of view, you know, we've had different types of plans before the board over the years that I've been, I've been on the board. But I don't think we've ever gotten into a discussion or had the engineer come with such care as you have tonight. So I'll, I'll open it up to the rest of the board, but we may just rely on your expertise. Mrs. Bartolini?
I have no questions. I think it's pretty clear why the A and R is needed, who's getting what, and why it'll work.
Mr. Stein?
So Bruce, could you just draw with your finger the existing lot 172?
Uh, 172 is this piece here, right in there.
Okay. And then, so that's lot 1B? Am I reading that correctly?
This is 1B, this triangle piece.
Yeah. And what's, what's the lot with the house on it there?
This one here, the large?
No, the other one.
Oh, this one here. That is, that is the lot, that's number two Strawberry Hill Road, which is shown as Lot 1A.
Okay. So the idea here is 1B is gonna be basically put in with 171?
Yes.
Okay. And in turn, 172 will be part of...
This lot here.
Right. So it's a land swap. It's just complicated because part of it's registered and part of it's in Land Court.
Correct. If it was just recorded land or all Land Court land, it'd be a lot simpler. It'd just be one plan.
So what's the legality of, of a planning board reviewing and approving an A and R where the land is in two separate registries, so to speak?
Well, it, it won't really be in two, well, it'd be in two registries, but there, each plan is in a separate registry. So in other words, this plan is gonna go to the Registry of Deeds, and this plan will go to, to the Land Court, be recorded at the Land Court. And so the, so this piece is registered land here, and this, this piece here, all of this land here is recorded land.
So has a real estate attorney looked at this? Been consulted on this?
Yes, we have, we have an attorney, and he's met with, with the Land Court Engineering Department. And I've spoken with the Land Court engineer. And if Jennifer Bernie would like to speak to him for clarification, that's fine. I'll give, give her his information. And he's very, very good at explaining things.
I mean, my, my recommendation would be to get a, like a, a comment on letterhead from your real estate attorney, whoever's, you know, just to explain.
Oh, this process here.
Right.
And, yeah, the rationale for that. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I can get, the attorney's name is Mark Tilden, and so I can get ahold of him and have him send a letter in that'll be attached to this and explaining. He's been involved in this process, been down to the Land Court meeting with, with them on that. And so that's fine.
So on both plans, we show Strawberry Hill Road appearing to, that's the, that line indicates the, the public way, the edge of the public way, but not the street. Because the way that's lined up, it looks like Strawberry Hill Road comes down and, is that a stone wall there?
That's correct. And the Strawberry Hill Road, the fee in a road is actually right up to the wall in this case. The accessory map is, is, doesn't show it that way because it's just approximate. But in actual fact, the, there is a layout acceptance plan on record for Strawberry Hill Road as well. And that's noted here on, on the list of plan references. But Strawberry Hill Road does come right down, and so there is some frontage of this lot on Strawberry Hill Road. So this, this piece here has frontage on two lots, on two roads, rather, I'm sorry.
And by adding that triangle, there'll be additional frontage that'll...
That's correct, yeah.
Kicks it over into enough frontage for another lot?
That's right. It currently now has about a hundred and ten feet of frontage. And with this, it'll, it'll bring it up way over two hundred feet of frontage for what it needs for, for a lot of frontage.
And then looking at the plan, both plans, you did mention that you weren't sure if the Strawberry Hill neighbor was going to actually, they'll, they'll obtain Lot 172 as an addition to their backyard, but you weren't sure if they were gonna actually occupy it or do something with it. Because I see, looks like a continuous stone wall that separates them.
That's right. I think, no, I, what is my understanding, because I wasn't speaking to him directly, but Mr. McManus, McKeonis has been talking to them, and he's actually cleared some of these trees out on his property in preparation for them to occupy that. And I think once that happens, he's indicated to me that they wanna improve this and make this like a backyard. And they have children or they have a child, and they just wanna have this area look like their own piece of property here.
And then the same with the triangle. If, if the triangle, the, the stone wall separates the triangle from the other piece, so what I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is there's a couple of hundred feet of stone wall there that might disappear?
It may disappear. I don't know if they're going to take it and then shift it over to the new lot lines.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have the answer to that. Don't, don't know exactly.
I can find out if... No, it's outside our jurisdiction. I was just curious, you know, you see the stone walls and you hate to see them go. But in this case, it would be curious to see, they're adding on that land, and yet it's completely separated by the stone wall. So it almost makes sense to at least make some openings in the wall so they could access it without having to climb over the wall.
Yeah, it, yeah, my, I mean, to me, I, if, if it was me that lived here, I would probably remove this wall and then just have it pushed back to, to the boundaries because it's very permanent. And it's an easy thing to do because what do you do with all those rocks? It's less expensive. Because that's why farmers did it, to move the, the stones over to your property line and is to cut them off the site. Because that's why they did it. It's just easier to do it. So that's what I would do. And, but I can't speak for them on that.
Sure. Yeah. Now, the, normally for any A and R, it's submitted, and as a matter of routine, the town planner looks it over to see if all the structures are shown on the plan, if the North Arrow is there. We've had A and Rs come in with no, no North Arrow. We've had them come in with no signature blocks. So, you know, the routine checklist of things that are supposed to be on an A and R, and she hasn't seen this plan. She hasn't seen these. So if you wanna submit those, what you have here tonight... But you haven't looked them over?
No, not to that detail, just of looking to understand it. Because knowing tonight was just gonna be, you know, explaining what they wanted to do.
Okay, 'cause the point I'm making is we're, we're getting into the fine details. You're asking us if there's any little things that we wanna add, big or little, to the plan. And in the process of doing that, we might skip over the routine stuff and then have it, and then find out later, oh gee, we missed, we missed this, this, this routine thing that we check on every A and R. So I guess we'll ask the town planner to take a, take a, a look at them in, through the routine checkover. And, and then what will we do? Call, call Bruce and just say, "Good to go?"
Okay.
Is that all right?
That sounds good to me.
Okay. You know, we're, we're looking so hard at one thing, we might miss something that we usually would pick up on. Was that it then, Bruce?
Yep, that, that clears it.
Mrs. Bartolini?
At what ti, at what point do we vote to approve the A and R?
Well, yeah, 'cause there's twenty-one days since, from submission, and that's why I didn't wanna pressure the board, and that's three-week timeline, and put it in there and then say, "Okay, now tell me what your, any comments you want on it." I wanted to give you the time to get that out first. So once I get that from Jennifer Bernie, then I will submit the application in and then say, "Okay, I got your comments. Now I'm putting the application in." And, you know, I gotta get the Mylar.
Right. Just to clarify, he hasn't submitted the application, and I just wanna state that for the record. Nothing formally, so the board doesn't have twenty-one days to act on anything now. This is just informal before he submits the...
It'll be very quick after I get the comments, because it's just a matter of going to Boston, get, getting, be able to make peace to, to, to make the production of that plan. And then we'll be right back in with the submission. So it'll probably be from a week's time, I would say, from when you get the comments to when it's back here on, in your desk for signatures.
So our next meeting is November second, and then we meet again. We have a joint meeting on November fifth. So, you know, if you submit them before that, that point, then probably get on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Next item on the agenda, revised agenda, is informal discussion, Chestnut Hill Road preliminary subdivision. I'll ask the town planner to give an update on, on that. And then, were you gonna use the tripod? Oh, he took it. Yeah, you, no, any way you wanna do it, George. Yeah, sure. All right, so...
Sure. I met with the developer and the engineer last week, received a call regarding a proposed development at Chestnut Hill Road, and suggested that they come in and meet with the planning board, or they were looking to meet with the planning board informally before they submit something formal on this property. We also, the department heads, met with the applicant today and the developer, and they'll be meeting with Shopsey tomorrow night just to get feedback on affordable, affordable units. Just to give you a little background on this, this was a parcel of land. Again, it's located on Chestnut Hill Farm, was part of the Johnson Farm, and it was taken out of Chapter sixty-one A in two thousand and fourteen, so it's currently unprotected. It is listed in the open space plan as a priority development. It consists of fifteen point seven four acres, I believe. Located, it's located in a residential A. It's identified as MAP seventy-two parcel three. And the developer's proposing twelve units. That's based on a conventional layout, and they're looking to do a flex zoning. Based on that requirement, there would be a twelve point five percent affordable unit. So there would have two, two affordables. So I will have the engineer come up, come up and show you a conceptual plan just to get initial feedback.
Now, while you're setting up, George, Jenny, can you go in the code and find the section that allows us or, I guess recommends, there's a section in the code that, that says that we can have these informal discussions. As you might remember from previous times, I've been cautioning...
I do remember.
Cautioning the board on these informal discussions because sometimes when we have an informal discussion, the proponent leaves here with the impression, correct or incorrect, that the planning board wants it this way, or the planning board has told the proponent to do it this way. So I wanna make sure that we're, we're very cautious in exercising what you're about to read.
Sure. So this is found under Section one seven four thirteen point two, major residential development. Section C, under application requirements, number one, preliminary meeting. Prior to filing an application, the applicant shall meet with the planning board in order to promote better communication and avoid misunderstanding. And again, that's why...
My concern is that we have... My concern is that we have poor communication that develops into a misunderstanding.
I, you know, when I, as a town planner, I think it's really great that a developer has the opportunity to meet before they go too far down the road, just to get feedback, even though it is informal. And meeting with department heads, I think, is another way. And meeting with other boards and committees, just to help guide a project that benefits the town and, and the developer, makes a better project in the long, long run.
Bill, can you see this at all?
Yeah.
Okay. George, you just need a microphone and you're good to go.
Microphone.
Anybody else want to come up and take a closer look as George takes us through this?
Okay, there's about 15 acres of land called Johnson Farm. It's basically at the corner of Chestnut Hill Road, roughly 1,000 feet from the nearest intersection, which is 1,030 feet from a water gate valve, which will become important when we get through this. Essentially, we have this particular parcel of land that is an open farm field. It looks like it's been hayed for some periods of time. A lot of weedy stuff is growing up there. We've had some wetlands around the site up here. We've got the aqueduct down in this location here. We've got the railroad behind it. We have generally, let's see, the slope is kind of a gentle slope going down towards the frontage down on Chestnut Hill Road, which is at this particular location here, about 150 feet. We have been out there last Friday and dug a series of holes just randomly throughout the property, found basically sand and gravel with a two-minute perk, water table six feet or more plus into the ground. And the soils are certainly acceptable for septic systems and things of that nature. With respect to infrastructure, there is the water line that goes along, I think this is Fisher Hill Road, is it? And it's 1,030 feet away from the property line, from the water gate valve. There is no sewer in the area. We don't believe there's any gas. And there's obviously the overhead telephone electric. As you said, we had met with the technical group today. The, the fire department has some concerns about this becoming a two-way street in order for their apparatus to get down more easily than the longer road in from, is it Route 30?
I should say they're recommending that be a two-way street. So they have concerns.
For about 1,000 feet to the site. We'll, we'll look at that in detail. This is by no means any sort of an engineered plan at this stage. It's just conceptual, and we want to get some feedback and information from both the planning board and Shopsey with respect to some other issues. In terms of a roadway, we would have adequate site distance going in either direction for an intersection. And I'm going to go to the first concept, which is the conventional layout. And that conventional layout would have a 1,000-foot roadway coming in just about through the center of the property. And on either side, there'd be lots. As I said, the soils conditions out there are more than adequate to support those. It's the acre zoning. So we showed 12 lots on the site with the 1,000-foot road. And that would become the basis for dealing with the flexible requirements. Now, we move to the flexible. And integrating the various requirements, concepts, and purposes of the flexible, we come up with a area of open space up front. And then we have the houses set in the back. We would implant a dense evergreen barrier along this area here, so that you would basically see the farm area, not the subdivision. We'd come in with what would, we prefer to be a private roadway system with a little loop and an interior common island. I can show some concepts of how that has actually been utilized in another area in which we think the demographics are probably the same. In Shrewsbury, off of Spring Street, we have this particular project that we went in and put this center island in. There is some photographs, and they're certainly available on Google, and you can use the little guy to march down the street and see how that all works. But there's the center island, it's heavily landscaped. There is another shot of that central island. There's a gazebo in it. And again, it's heavily landscaped. There's a concept house that was built there, and they're all pretty much like that. And this is the entrance from the existing street. But basically, the inside of that is either heavily landscaped and has various amenities in it. There's places for kids to play and things of that nature. And it is fairly instructive if you visit the site to see how this particular site would lay out. In this, we take the 12 units that are proven, that can be proven by conventional layout and testing. And we take the two units of affordable housing that we need, and the bonus provisions for those, which brings us to 18 interior units. And these are laid out around this central common open space area. A little private driveway coming in. As I said, the soils are sand and gravel, so we put the septic system, a common septic system, under the island. And then, as I learned from the town today, they do not take over responsibility for the drainage infrastructure, which requires a lot of maintenance and upkeep over the years. So we have really three components, roadway, maintenance, plowing, and things of that nature, and the septic system, and finally the stormwater, which would be a common expense for the particular project. So we would like to discuss with you and with Shopsey, starting tomorrow night, the ability to relocate these particular affordable units to an off-site location, which is allowable, as I understand from your regulations. You can certainly go through that, and we can discuss that at the next meeting. This is just an introduction. We're going to have the preliminary meeting, I think, after we talk to Shopsey. So we're not pushing anything at this particular stage, just opening it up for questions, comments, concerns, and things of that nature, so we can do a design that I think works and affects the community minimally. The other aspect of this is the, the open space. There's equation in the particular bylaw, and we want to discuss that at some detail in the very near future. I know that's got several different definitions and applications. So we want to get to that and deal with it at that particular point in time. So I will simply respond to any preliminary questions and comments and suggestions at this stage.
First thing George would be, I don't think you told us who you are.
Oh, I didn't.
I don't think.
I'm George Connors. I'm an engineer with Cornerstone. I'm an attorney, and I'm also representing Habitat. Bruce Wheeler is the principal developer. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So you wanted to go first?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I did notify the rec. department, conservation, open space, border, border selectmen, border health, just so everyone knows about this project. So that's why you see some border selectmen and some open space folks here this evening.
Mr. Stein.
Thanks for coming in. Have you performed an environmental assessment yet?
No.
Because you've obviously put some thought into placement of open space and layout. The environmental assessment piece would be a critical component of that thought process, because our code is very specific about what types of, you know, land is appropriate for open space.
Yes. We have not done that. We've simply accumulated the published topography, the published assessor's map, and walked the site and dug some test holes. That's really as much as we've done. There is a fair amount of engineering to do, and a lot on the road as well. So we have wetlands that surround the site with certain offsets. We have the aqueduct with certain offsets and all that sort of thing, which will be studied as we go forward.
So I'm also the planning board representative on our South Borough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee. So I'll be seeing you tomorrow night at 6 o'clock for that.
Okay.
One thing, I think you had mentioned in your opening remarks, that you're interested in moving the affordable units offsite. And again, our code is fairly specific that it's in the event of, of extraordinary circumstances and hardship.
Correct. And we think that those, at least initially, are that because this would have so much private infrastructure, and the cost of maintaining that would be against the idea that the responsibilities of each and every homeowner in that particular project would not be able to be met equally as your code suggests.
Right. The code also says it can't be because of marketing or financial.
Correct.
Which, it seems like that's what we're looking at, though.
Well, the developers' financial versus the ultimate affordable house owner's financial, I think are two different things. I'm not sure that the code addresses that. And we're happy to talk about that at some point.
Okay, I think, I'm pretty sure, my interpretation of it
Mm-hmm.
is that it's in regards to the proponent and.
The proponent, yes.
It's not.
So in order for us to build this, we would have no problem putting the two units in there. But the continued maintenance cost, 1/15th or 1/18th, or whatever it is, of snow plowing, septic system maintenance, and stormwater maintenance, is going to put it out of the marketability component in terms of their ongoing obligations.
The conventional plan that you have now overlaid the flexible on.
Yes.
Each of those lots are not one acre. Some are larger than one acre, the conventional.
A little bit.
So what is the total amount of land reflected in lots 1, 2, and 12?
Which is the light green on that plan?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't calculate that, but those lots are a little over an acre, probably somewhere in the vicinity of three, four acres. We haven't done any calculations. It's all just sketching and things of that nature.
You were aware that it's at least 30% open that has to come out of the total acreage of the project?
I'm aware of that particular requirement for so many percent of this and so many percent of that. But we haven't got down to the point where we're mathematizing it yet.
And when you mentioned that you learned yesterday that the town will not, upon completion of the project, assume maintenance of the drainage system, nor do you want them to take on the roadway. You want a private road. How does the, the drainage, have you done anything relative to, what does that mean relative to costs for the flexible alternative to maintain the project in general? Road plowing, the, the things that you already mentioned, the, not so much the septic tanks, but the, the cost of road plowing, the cost of drainage maintenance, if retention, if you're, you're near wetlands, retention ponds and things of that nature. Have you done any thinking about that?
No mathematical, no financial pro forma at this stage. But we do know that common septic systems are heavily regulated by DEP. Will be up near 10,000 gallons. We'll have reserve funds and maintenance funds. We're going to have to have the stormwater system maintained on a regular basis, catch basins vacked out, and the, all that stuff. It, it adds up at the end of the day. We haven't gotten any numbers, because we don't know a lot of things. We don't know the amount of road. We don't know the drainage size, the catchment areas, the septic sized systems, the, whether we'll have pump stations or all gravity. There's a lot of questions in terms of what will the costs for this be? And they'll be answered as we get to a preliminary plan.
In preliminary discussions with department heads or with the town planner, was, without adding homeowner association fees, what were you seeing the ballpark cost of the units being? A million plus?
The houses?
Yeah.
On the lots? I don't have that number.
Okay.
I can't imagine it would be.
I thought that had come up, but.
I, I don't know. I don't recall that.
Well, in our meeting last week, it was just discussed that these would be high-end houses. And there, there could be a concern with citing affordable units, but they're, you know, today mentioned they're, they're willing to do that. It's just what, what does the town want to see? Affordable units here? Do they want to see offsite or money in lieu of? And then we talked about the same things you're talking about. The, you know, Karen, DPW director, said that the stormwater remains private, so that, that's, you know, legitimate concerns of those costs when you start condo, condo costs of road maintenance of drainage, et cetera.
My concern, one of them anyways, is that in those communities that, such as us, who have this provision where you directly provide the units, or you put them, you provide those units, but you provide them elsewhere in the community, or you pay the community X amount of money as a payment in lieu of, and the community through its Shopsey or whatever develops the affordable housing somewhere in the community. My experience with that has been that the communities are usually unable, by just not having the expertise, to build the units elsewhere, or don't have a consistent formula to figure out and update that formula on a regular basis as to what is the in lieu of payment in today's market versus, we'll say 2,000, when we came up with this idea of allowing payments in lieu of, and I know it was even before that. So what experience has the town had in taking payments in lieu of? And to what extent has that translated into tangible, here are the units we use with the public money to produce the, you know, we produce X number of units in there that was, that equ, X equals the X number that the five developers that gave us payment in lieu of should have come up with, and I'm making up another, another number now, but say 30. And did we produce the same number of units that would have required the developer to produce if he was doing it within the confines of his land? And it's, because this has been a real problem all over the state, where they have looked at these, to the point that many communities dropped payments in lieu of, and are still willing to have alternative locations, as long as the alternative locations don't end up becoming a cluster of all affordable housing, because they can't be mixed. of all affordable housing because they can't be mixed with the better housing. That, where we sort of create two, two sides of town and something like that. And we, and communities are trying to make sure that doesn't happen either.
Do you want, do you want me to respond to that?
Go ahead.
So, I do understand the difficulty, especially, I think it's, it's easier to cite affordable units in a development or a town that has more diverse or housing choices. So, when you have a development that's got single-family, duplex, triplex, it's easy to kind of just blend it all in. But when you're just building single-family, large, four or five-bedroom houses, it's difficult. I mean, we, Southborough's not alone. We had the same problem when I was a town planner in Bolton, when you were building big houses. You're only allowed to build single-family houses. So, how do you build a house that fits into that context of the rest of the community or the rest of the development? You don't want to be the only small house. Here, at least, you have the duplex, that you can do the duplex and it can look like a large colonial. So, that has worked in prior developments. And I can't think of the street. I have to look at, is it Stockwell?
Stockwell.
Where I think you drive by and you can't even tell that those are duplexes. They fit in perfectly within the context of the neighborhood. As far as going offsite, the, the property on Gilmore Road, from what I understand, was a tax-taking or agreement. And then Brendan Holmes constructed that house. The other house was done, and I'm not sure of the history of that, if that, and I'd have to do some research. But the, the one where Volk finished or remodeled the house, I'm not sure if that was done through CPA funds or if that was done through trust fund money that was, you know, coming from a developer as money in lieu of, so...
Well, I've articulated my concern about how do we, how do we know what the payment is?
There's a calculation formula in here that they would have to present to the planning board. So, there's a formula in here that they have to follow because we were going through this with the previous Isabella, where it was a formula.
And are we, you've mentioned the Stockwell, that was done by the developer, not by CHOPC or the town of Southborough anymore.
That's correct.
But Gilmore Road and a couple of others that you mentioned, does that equate to the number of units that would have been achieved if contained within the confines of the proposed development as opposed to the three or four units that we ended up with?
I think that they would have to match that. So, if this required two, then you'd have to construct two elsewhere. It has to be equal.
I would love to see that proved. Maybe CHOPC can do that.
So, I have a question, just, I mean, it's really at the planning board's discretion as to whether or not we allow the proponent to move forward with a flexible plan. If, for some reason, we did, in our, in our estimation, if this is not in the best interest of the town to proceed in this manner, for whatever reason, if, if we're not comfortable with the payment in lieu of or, I don't know, some issue with, with the affordable housing or, you know, whatever the criteria needed to establish a flexible overlay, the proponent would just have to go conventional, correct?
Right. And then you lose all the open space and you have more of infrastructure. So, you have more road, you have bigger lots, and you're not gaining this open space. So, I don't know if you can show that conventional plan? Do you want to, and just look at the difference? So, it impacts a lot more than just, you know, your open space is basically gone. You're center in this open space up in front. You, you still have to do a portion of open space, and I think the subdivision rigs say 10% of each lot. But the rear, but that's all you'll gain unless you can negotiate. So, there is a reason that you want to do clustering. It brings everything in closer, less road.
I just, I just got to want to make it clear that the purpose of us evaluating a flex and considering making exceptions on the affordable housing piece in terms of accepting payment in lieu is if it falls into what we esteem to be the best interest of the town. This is a very high priority parcel from an open space perspective.
We've heard that, yes.
So, I think it will be helpful to the planning board to hear CHOPC's thoughts tomorrow night when they meet with the applicant and the developer, as well as open space. You know, the department heads today, we had recreation there and conservation. So, they recognize the importance of the, the open space or recreational potential.
I have another question. In reading the planner's report section on this, it indicated that the parcel was a high recreation potential and a five-point-something
Right.
rating as an open space. Is there, in the open space plan, a way of saying, therefore, we think a parcel that scores like this should be open space versus recreation? Or how do we resolve that?
That's a good question for our folks in the back. I took that information right from the open space plan, that this, this parcel was identified as a property to be protected. It has great recreational potential, so there is interest from the rec department. But again, that's something that you would have conservation and open space and the rec department discussing what is the best use? Is, you know, this was farmland, so does it make sense for a community garden or trails or just keeping it as, you know, passive? Or is there an active potential for that? But it, it is identified in the, the open space plan.
As both.
As a high priority for open space and recreational use.
So, we're moving, you know, ahead into what might be. But I'd like to go backwards a little bit and talk about what we had before. So, these 15 acres was farmland, so it was under chapter 61A. Is that correct, George?
That's my understanding, but I have not done any research on that at all.
So, I see we have a selectman in here and some open space people. Does anybody know the history of the 61A? I know, ever since I was a kid, that's always been farmland. And I've, I believe I've heard discussions from town officials and even the farmers back in the 70s and the 80s that, that this land was in the, has been in the Johnson family for a couple of hundred years, maybe. So, I'd like to, I think it's important for the board to know the 61A history. Yeah, it was in 61A, maybe from the inception of that law up until a certain date. And town planner gave us, did you give us a date as to when it came out of 61A?
All I know, I don't have an exact date. But after meeting with the applicant last week, I went over and had a conversation with the assessors because I wasn't sure if it was still in chapter 61A. And they informed me that it was taken out of 61A in 2014.
Does anybody know anything about that? Because normally when something like a parcel comes out of 61A, it triggers some type of an action, I believe, by the board of selectmen to consider or an application to the board of selectmen to consider the town's option to obtain the land. And I'm wondering if that ever happened? And if it did, if it did, where, where did that go? And if it didn't, then why didn't it? I, I just, there's a, there's a bunch of...
The law doesn't trigger unless there was a development proposal at the time they took it out.
So, you're saying that when they took it out and they...
It's common for landowners now to take it out for a year, thereby lifting... Thereby lifting the 61A. That's the action of taking it out.
And that is correct, Kathy. It's right here.
And then coming back after the year is up with a development proposal. They do owe back taxes, I believe, on, on the land when that happens. But the owners usually transfer those back taxes over to the buyer.
But I think you're wondering if, when it was taken out, if there was, if, if somehow the town could have maybe approached the Johnsons or, or if people were aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the, the open space as, as a priority. The rec, rec is a priority. And so, when it comes out of 61A, I think, at least from my point of view, it was silenced. I never, never, no one ever heard about it. And, and yet it wasn't a secret if they, if, if the assessors knew that it came out. So, I'm just wondering what the steps were supposed to be compared to what they actually were? And, and then from that point, has, has the property been sold, George?
Not to my knowledge.
So, do you have any knowledge of, if the town were to come up with some money and buy it, would that be still on the table?
I have no information on that whatsoever.
Yeah. This is part of the, the discussion.
Okay, that's, certainly your concern. But ours is to advance a plan for development and see what your comments are. If there's an extraneous issue about whether the town can buy it or not, it's a little bit beyond my particular input tonight.
Yeah. Well, I think as, as this, if this project continues, you know, in that direction, then a lot of people, some people are going to want to know, you know, why, why wasn't, it made an option for the town? And probably a legitimate reason or, or response to that, but it should be known. I don't know what it is. But I do know some of those rules that Kathy and Jenny were talking about. And I want to see to, to what extent that, those were applied or, or not. And, and when it, when the assessors were informed that it was taken out of 61A, what steps should have been or could have been taken?
I can only respond that they're spending money with us now, and I'm sure they would have asked that question.
Yeah. Does anybody, yeah, I'll open it up. Did, does, Mr. Shea, did you want to, you just, yeah, you got to get the mic. Good evening, selectmen.
Good evening, Don. How are you? Brian Shea, to be honest, that's part of the reason why I'm here tonight as well. It's just to figure out what that, exactly what that process is and whether the town has a right to, a first right to the property or not. And to be honest, I'm not 100% sure what the correct answer is, and hopefully we can get that answer soon.
Thank you. Freddie?
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie. I am a member of the Open Space Preservation Commission, but I'm not speaking in that capacity because we haven't had a meeting to discuss this yet. But I am a little familiar with the 61 process for this parcel. And I will go back and state, years ago, we were working with Jean Kitchen to create a process that included the open space. And so, that anytime there were changes in chapter 61, there would be a process moving forward. And that never got finalized by her before she left. And our commission is currently working on a process. What happened here is the property owners took it out. You have to renew this type of chapter 61 every year, in I believe, October, for the following fiscal year. And they pulled it out. We didn't find out until, you know, that, so it would have been out July 1st of 2014, I believe. And then we didn't find out about it until it had been out for quite a while. After it comes out, you have one year where the town has right of first refusal only if there's an offer to change the use. So, if you were to sell it now, and this was coming up in that year, that, that right would kick in. But they waited the year out, so there is no town right of first refusal, which is not to say there is no town interest in the property from different entities, I would say. But I think to your point, Donnie, a process would be welcome so we didn't find ourselves in this position when a parcel of this magnitude became available.
Thank you. I remember, I think it was before 9/11 field was built and maybe even a couple of the other fields. It was like in the, maybe the mid 90s, early 90s. And the town was growing and there was a big-time shortage of playing fields compared to the growing population of children and teams in the town. And I was told that as part of the rec department's search for land to have playing fields, that the Johnsons were approached to use part of this land as a field. And I think they respectfully declined, and it may have had something to do with the nature of the road and the access and so on. But it does have a, a little bit of a history of, you know, the people in the town or the rec, looking at this piece as a possible recreation piece. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mimi? This must be, this must be important. You're at the, it's always important.
Mimi Latrell, I'm also a member of the Open Space Preservation Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual because the commission has not met to discuss this. Does this parcel abut Chestnut Hill Farm? The protected property that the town has a CR on?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Because I would mention that our bylaw requires that open space is connected to other open space. So, if it abuts Chestnut Hill Farm, the location of the open space should be abutting that already protected open space.
I think it's separated by something because I know Beth was talking about that today, about trail connections. And there is some separation. The aqueduct separates it, but...
Can you repeat what Freddie said so that the viewing audience will know what exactly?
Speaking for Frederica Gillespie, Chestnut Hill Farm is on the other side of the aqueduct.
Mimi, did you want to come up and look on the map here? Because it shows the aqueduct. Freddie? There's the parcel. There's the aqueduct, so that's...
That's the acreage that the Sudbury Valley trustees have the conservation restriction on.
Can you point to that? Okay.
This road is the road that goes into the farm.
So are you suggesting that the developer considers swapping, moving and putting the open space on that side and the development on the other side?
Freddie, did you have a question?
I think in relationship to both Jessie's comment earlier and Mimi's comment now, what the bylaw requires, that the environmental assessment report, I think the intention of that in the bylaw is to look at these things and to determine where the best location for the open space is before you start driving the project to the point of having roads and lots. On a flexible subdivision, it's very clear what the intent is, which is about the open space. And the clustering to provide the best layout of the open space after you've done an environmental assessment per your Rules and Regulations, Chapter 244. I would also point out that according to the bylaw, which I don't have in front of me which section, but I'm pretty sure the flexible subdivision, if you have a shared septic, the required percentage of open space goes up to 55%. And additionally, that land used for septic is not part of the open space. So just if you're here for a general conversation and someone were to be considering drawing plans that had the majority of the open space on top of the septic system, that wouldn't meet the requirements of the bylaw. And the fact that you do have a shared septic bumps up the percentage of open space as well. Just an observation.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other questions, comments? Jessie?
So earlier, Jennifer made the point that this would be, you know, as a planning board member, my first subdivision project from the very beginning. So that said, you know, I'm curious, wouldn't it, from my perspective intuitively, it would make a lot more sense to loop the open space commission in from the very beginning on these types of-
That's why they were-
Points and questions.
Right. That's why they were notified of it, to be able to attend this meeting as well as the Board of Selectmen. And an email went out to everyone to let them know about this project, to include them in, early on in discussions.
So, but they haven't had an opportunity to meet as a commission yet?
Well, I just, I just met with them late last week. So this is how this has evolved. So yes.
Okay.
I don't know how often open space meets. How often do you meet? And what? They meet monthly. When did you last meet? And when are you meeting again?
We typically meet monthly, but if we're required to meet more frequently, we're flexible and do that. We're meeting tomorrow morning is our next meeting.
Great.
So like historically, at what point in the process would the open space commission be looped in? Maybe Don, if you want to.
I don't think that there's a, that's why I was asking about the formal process. We don't, the 61A parcels are, you know, not that frequently brought forward. I do remember way back in the Stone Age when there were three selectmen, and there was a piece of land, and I think it was some Johnson land. It was way back. And the planning board recommended that the selectmen vote to sponsor a warrant article to see if the town wanted to purchase the piece of land. And the three selectmen at the time, I guess, listened to that. And then within a minute or two, voted to say that they didn't think that the town would be interested in it and declined to move it any further. So the parcel was then sold, and there's houses there now, without giving the townspeople the opportunity to have a say. I was a little bit disappointed with that one. But that was a long time ago. And I don't, I think it might even predated the open space commission. So there's more, there's more opportunities with these different sections of the town government to look at this. Even the rec department back then was pretty much, much, much more part-time and it's much smaller. Did you want to?
No, I was just going to say, I think, again, reaching out and meeting with the developer, reaching out and asking to meet with me, and then meeting with department heads coming before the planning board and giving other boards and committees, Board of Selectmen, open space, the opportunity to participate in this discussion now is great. And that is doing it early on.
Thank you. George, if there's nothing else, then what in your world would be the next steps after getting this information tonight, having this discussion?
We're going to meet with Shopsi tomorrow night and discuss this affordable component and how it's integrated in. And then I think we'd like to be back on the next meeting, is November 2nd or something. Maybe that one or the following one to re-go through this and adjust some of these concepts. Still no math, still no science. Just still work this preliminary discussion and make sure we have all the ducks in order before we go along with any real designs and things of that nature.
So when you come back before the planning board, it would still be under that section that you called, that you read to promote? What section is that?
It's Section-
Section 17413.2, Major Residential Development. Section C, Application Requirements, Preliminary Meeting.
So you'd be coming back under that, that section of the code?
Yeah, we envision a couple of, at least a couple of preliminary meetings before.
Okay. Yeah, and I think when you come back, hopefully, there'll be, you know, more of the planning board members to-
Yes.
To, you know, give you feedback on your ideas.
We knew there wouldn't be a full board tonight, but we thought we'd at least introduce it as we go forward with the other meetings that we're going to be having.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. Thanks.
Testing.
Jenny, what else do we have? That was our last agenda item.
Yes, and you don't have it in the packets. Only because, no, because our printer ran out of ink, and we have no way of printing large 11 by 7s. I would only be able to put it on a small. And you would not be able to read it, it'd be about 50 pages. So I'm just going to go over some of the big, big ones. On your table tonight, you had upcoming Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, Fall 2015 Workshop. So if the board is interested in signing up for any of those, we did budget, I believe it was $300 in the budgets, to allow board members to participate in that. There's also a draft letter in your packets. Couple meetings ago, we talked about the Green Community Act. And in order to become a green community, you had to identify at least a one-acre parcel that could be as-of-rate zoning for solar. And the board, we talked about different ways to achieve that. And the board suggested that we send a letter out to all of the property owners within the industrial park and industrial districts to see if they have a proposal. So I have a draft letter in there that I wanted the board to look at and give me your feedback on that, so that I could send that out to property owners. I'm not expecting you to do that tonight, here at the meeting, unless you choose to. But at least to look it over. And then if you're okay with it, maybe at the next meeting, I can go ahead and start sending, send that out based on your feedback. The next item in your packet is a letter. We did a site visit. Mark Purple and myself, along with other department and committee members a few weeks ago with Senator Eldridge. Senator Eldridge asked that we send in a letter with suggested improvements. So I've drafted a letter. Mark Purple made a few minor tweaks to it. It is going to come, be sent or signed by Mark Purple. That's in your packets as well. So I would ask the board to look that over. And if you have any comments or suggestions, please let me know before that gets sent out. I know Mark Purple will be talking to the Board of Selectmen about that tomorrow evening at their meeting. The next item in your packet is a Housing Repair Resources Guide. Really, it's just a summary of available resources for not only seniors, but for veterans and low-income folks. It's amazing how many resources are out there. And I actually just got an email today from someone that was speaking to a board member about this resource guide. And they reached out to me today. I guess they spoke to someone at the fair last week. So I don't know if it was one of you or who. Okay. Well, someone suggested that they reach out to me and provide me with another source. So anyways, in your packets is a source of housing repair, repair guides. And it's just a way of trying to keep our seniors and people in their houses. There's resources out there to build ramps or help them with any necessary repairs. And I might point out, the Senior Center is a great resource, too. And then also in your packets is, there's an appeal of the 40B for the Oregon Road Project. So you see that in your packets. This is for the 40B. That was recently approved as the over 55. So that will not, still impact them moving forward and putting the infrastructure in as the town council said was okay.
So do you feel, do you feel you're referencing is Oregon Road, not, yeah?
Right. Oregon, right.
Understand, so it's Oregon Road, not over by-
Not the Park Central, right. It's the Oregon Road, one, Stone Brook Estates, or Stone Brook. And it's for the recent approval, or the 40B. It's the appeal on the 40B. So I don't know if it's recent or going back to the original, but that's all I can tell you. And it, again, has nothing to do with the planning department. It's the appeal to the ZBA.
So does this go back in front of the ZBA?
The appeal, at this point, I'm, let's see, there's-
It's their decision to be-
It's their decision. Right. It goes, right, it goes to the state.
Mrs. Latrell?
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road. I am one of the parties that appealed this decision. We have a couple of things going on. One, we have the appeal of the special permit for the over 55. The next thing was the ZBA approved an insubstantial change on the comprehensive permit, which changed that from the approved layout to the same layout as the special permit for the over 55. And we are in conference on that. We have appealed that decision.
And in here is, I'm sorry, Kathy, I was-
Question is, who, to whom it went? And I don't believe it goes back to the ZBA.
It does not go back to the ZBA.
It's, it says here, Appeal of Letter of Building Commissioner. So there, are you appealing those?
That's the third thing.
Oh, okay. So I guess there's multiple appeals.
So that's before the ZBA. And that is, we're petitioning the Zoning Board of Appeals to revoke the comprehensive permit because per their decision, that no modifications or changes were to be made to the comprehensive permit until it was filed with the Registry of Deeds. And it has never been filed with the Registry of Deeds.
So if this appeal is upheld, is this matter going to come back in front of the planning board? Is a site plan review, is Mr. Di Petri going to?
No, the appeal is to the ZBA's decision.
Right. But if the appeal is then upheld and that decision is voided, I'm just kind of wondering why it's on the planner's report. Is this-
They told us that they would build the over 55 that we approved if-
The microphone is-
The, I lost my train of thought.
Why is the-
The developer said, when they were here trying to get us to sign things, that they were going to develop the site either as a 40B or as approved by us. So that if the 40B didn't go forward, then the over 55 would.
So is-
That's their intent.
Is the over 55-
There may be another appeal. But I mean, their intent was to develop the site as we approved it, whether it's under the auspices of a 40B permit or whether it's under an approved subdivision for over 55.
So there was a subdivision back then that was in front of the planning board as an over 55?
Yes. At one point, they told, we were under the impression they weren't going forward with their comprehensive permit.
Did you guys approve it?
Yeah.
And that's what they're putting the infrastructure in, based on that subdivision, the approval. The only reason this is in your packet is because, just for an FYI, because if you get asked a question, the appeal is not on the planning board. It's on the ZBA. And they can still move forward under the planning board's approval.
And you said, and that appeal goes to?
I'm not an attorney, so I'm not saying where the appeal is. Mimi could, as, I can just see that there's a letter here appealing the building commissioners' letter. And that is on the ZBA agenda for November 9th, 2015.
Through the chair?
Mrs. Latrell?
Just to clarify, the special permit for the over 55 is under appeal. That's working its way through the appeals court. So that the subdivision, the subdivision in the site plan approved by the planning board was in conjunction with that special permit for the use for the over 55, which is under appeal. And we're appealing to the ZBA, we're petitioning to the ZBA to revoke the comprehensive permit for that same site.
So you have not appealed the decision of the ZBA to the State Housing Appeals Committee?
The original comprehensive permit was not appealed. We're petitioning the ZBA to revoke that because it has since expired.
Don, in the interim, I've had a chance to review the solar letter. Before you want to go back to that and wrap that up? Or do we?
Yeah, I would, can we go back to that one, Jenny? The solar?
So there were two things that jumped out at me, Jennifer. The first paragraph, roof mounted and system smaller than 250 kilowatts. I think it might be a good idea to, you know, kind of adhere to the current bylaw and specify it's systems generating 250 kilowatts or lower. Because it's not actually, it's not actually site acreage that's technically specified. Because it's not actually, it's not actually site acreage that's, um, technically specified or regulated.
Well, I, I think what I was trying to say is to become a green community, we as a town have to cite at least a one acre property as of right. And that's what we're, what we're trying to do. It's not to say that you might have a five acre site that you might think makes sense to be as of right. So.
Right. But I was just saying, if, I would, I would suggest just amending that language a little bit to systems generating less than 250 kilowatts instead of systems smaller than.
Okay. Yep. No, that definitely makes sense.
And then the second to last paragraph.
Second to.
It is anticipated that the Planning Board will recommend amended bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I wasn't, I, I think we had, you know, looked at talking about maybe, but I didn't know that we were actually gonna put it out there that we were going, moving forward with an amended bylaw.
So maybe I wouldn't put this. I know that this is a goal of the Board of Selectmen and Mark Purple had directed me to.
Well, is the amended bylaw, is that referring to the solar bylaw that we just passed?
Yes. Yep. So in order to become a green community, you would have to amend our existing bylaw to identify a property, um, one acre that would be as of right. Or however we would have to amend it. Because our bylaw currently says that all property within the industrial park or industrial district has to go through special permit. Under the green communities, you have to identify somewhere in town. It doesn't have to be the industrial park or industrial district. It's somewhere in town is as of right. When we met at this meeting, a couple, a couple meetings ago, we discussed that it would stay within the industrial park and industrial, um, district and that to reach out to property owners within that to see if there's a proposed project that makes sense. And not just randomly picking a one acre.
I mean, if, if nobody else minds, I think we might wanna just strike that.
May I suggest another alternative? Same paragraph? It is anticipated that the Planning Board may recommend an amended bylaw at the annual 2016 town meeting held in April based upon feedback, um, from this letter and public hearing.
I think that makes more sense.
And maybe, maybe not citing when, when it is. That way you're taken off if it's 2016, but.
Yeah, I would agree with that too.
Okay. I would leave it in. I mean, 'cause that is, I think, what we've been asked to do.
That's true.
I mean, it's, it is what we're, we're, we'll have a decision yea or nay as to whether we're going to do that, but it's relative to 2016. It's not something, it's not on a shelf.
All right. Well, I will, I'll amend this. Um, and then.
Hand your mind?
Yeah, if you don't mind. And then I'd, I'd like to send it out to everyone. Just take a look at, look at it.
More of my other comments because it was trying to follow what was.
Hold off on this if you, you know, prefer to wait until our November 2nd meeting where the full board is here.
I think you're okay.
I'm okay.
With, with the feedback you've gotten tonight personally. And then I had a question about the MBTA letter.
Sure.
I, I don't, I think you were the only planning, uh, were there any other Planning Board members there with the site visit?
No, why do I say?
No, no. I, I just, because.
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, since you were the one that was there.
Right. And it, it, well, it's the same thing. Mark Purple was the only one there and there weren't any Board of Selectmen members, but he is bringing it to the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night just to see if they have any feedback or other suggestions, concerns.
I mean, nothing jumps out at me that needs to be addressed. I think the letter's fine personally as is.
Oh, I thought you were trying to send it. Okay.
No. I was just saying, it's good to go.
So if that's it.
I'm okay with letting her send it too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does, does that mean we're letting, where it's going? Okay.
Our next meeting is November 2nd, followed, uh, three days later on November 5th, a joint meeting. Tell us about the joint meeting.
Sure.
Actually, tell us about the, what's the agenda for November 2nd so far?
We have nothing on the agenda so far except for this evening with, um, the Chestnut Hill development that requested, um, to be placed on it. And I shouldn't say we don't have anything, um, I'm sorry, that's November 2nd. November 5th at seven o'clock is a joint meeting with the Open Space Preservation Commission. And that is when Mass Autobahn is gonna be coming in and presenting the GIS, uh, open space project that they've been working on for the last year. We, um, Jessie, both Jessie and Andrew represent the Planning Board. Um, and then Open Space has been, uh, Mimi and Freddie, and we've met with them numerous times, um, to give them feedback. So this is them coming in just to present their findings, um, and whether, you know, both boards, uh, Board and Commission have any, um, suggestions. So they're really coming in just to present their final, uh, product that they've been working on.
The draft final.
The draft final. Correct.
Next question, uh, if, so looking at the 2016 warrant articles, is it too soon to bring that up?
No, I wanted to just, um, talk about that a little bit. I haven't submitted anything formally, um, beginning to work on the budget, um, which pretty much not looking for anything new.
Discuss, move to that point, the town meeting. Can we wrap up, I think, the point that we don't have anything on the agenda for 11-2, but we do have something for 11-5. So could we combine the agenda? You know, have one meeting on the 5th that combi- you know, combines and before the Autobahn makes its presentation that we meet with that developer and then try to control how much else gets on that agenda?
We could ask the develop, if, if this board felt that they wanted to cancel the November 2nd, we could ask that developer if they don't mind coming back on.
For the 2nd or?
Yeah.
The, the meeting, the, the next meeting when I was taking rapid notes.
So we're meeting at seven o'clock on the 5th. Um, I'm assuming Mass Autobahn, that's probably gonna be an hour. So minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
We could potentially add on if this board, it might make sense to do that if nothing else comes up between now and then.
I would recommend that too.
Okay.
I support Kathy's suggestion.
So you'd wanna meet after that, not before?
Well, I, I just suspect that, uh, you know, if, if Andrew's coming, he's probably gonna be commuting.
And then Open Space, um, members who are very interested in that project will be, be there as well. So that could make sense. Okay.
So you'll, uh, get back to us on the November 2nd?
Yep.
Go ahead. Were, were you all done Kathy?
Yeah. I'm, now we can go to the town meeting. This discussion that had quasi-started.
So beginning to look at the, the budget and warrant articles. Um, for warrant articles, we'll have the road acceptance, um, for William Colary Lane, which as you know was on, was supposed to be on, um, last year, but the developer couldn't get the, um, the top coat, couldn't get it paved in time. Uh, we did the open space walk, et cetera. Um, so he's asked, or he will be asking the Board of Selectmen to, um, accept that road. Um, so I anticipate that that, uh, will be on the agenda. Uh, acceptance of open space for Kellum Farm. Uh, we do need to do a site visit in November, uh, but anticipating that going forward. Um, the solar green communities, um, is another one. And then I have here, uh, possibly Zach or Open Space as, um, we've been meeting. And I don't know if there's gonna be any open space changes or not, but I just was putting that as just a, a thinking. And then the other one, um, the master plan, this is in a warrant article, well, it is a warrant article, um, is the master plan was last updated in 2008. And a town can, you're not mandated by the state in any way to have a master plan. It is good to have a master plan.
I think it was updated and it's mandated.
Uh, speaking to, um, Judy Barrett, she really, she stated that there is no requirement that you have a master plan. There, there used to be many years ago, but there is no requirement to have a master plan. It is a good idea to have a master plan, especially if you're going for grant, grants. Um, guiding, you know, uh, developers. Um, so.
Deputy Assistant Secretary when we filed the amendment of chapter 40.
Yep.
That required the communities to do a master plan.
Okay. So maybe.
If it's got changed again.
Yep.
It's entirely possible.
Well, then let's confirm that. So.
That's why there was so, so much more articulation as to what the content of the plan needed to be.
Yep. Well, I had a, I did have a conversation with Judy Barrett last week because I wanted to look up that section of the, the state to look up what they recommended, um, what had to be updated. And Judy, um, called me and she said, you're, you're not gonna find it because there is no requirement, but towns should have it. So we'll, we'll definitely reconfirm that. Um.
I think Mark Seekentall is still at EOCD.
Yep.
Or whatever they call it today.
I, I thought it was, it was, um, there was no penalty if a town didn't have it, but there were incentives if towns did have it and it was related to, um, like you said, grants. And I thought it was related also to, um, park, parks?
Um, that's a different program and I'm not even sure it's still in existence. I think the law, I think what, you are correct in the fact that I don't think the law specifies, you know, how many times your hand gets slapped for failing to have produced the master plan that's required or that it doesn't contain what needs to be in a master plan. Um, so it's, if there's no dollar sign attached as a fine or jail sentences, people frequently decide to ignore it. Um.
But let, I'll.
The other thing about bonus points and stuff for having it, that was a program that name escapes me, but you filed it annually and you got points up to like 120 and.
Is it the, it's the Commonwealth? And I know exactly what it is 'cause I've done it.
I did it several, by that time I was working in Framingham.
It's the Commonwealth and I can't think of.
Yeah, I can't remember the term either. Um, but if you got certain points, you, for instance, Framingham, if they filed an open space plan would win. We scored so high. I mean, it just filed these.
Do you have an open space plan? Do you have an affordable housing? What have you achieved? Right.
So we were, we were up there like within two points of the maximum that you could have. And they've since done the things they needed to do. So, I mean, it was just, you know, I'd be calling up the department heads, file, you're gonna win.
I, I will clarify it again then, um, but I did put out my mass planners to find out, um, what it costs to update it and I got, you know, ranges. Typically, towns will update it every 10 years, um, so that you know what your goals are and develop, you can develop, further develop, um, goals that you've identified. So if this town did wanna up, have an updated plan for 2018, you would request funding at the next town meeting. That way it was available for fiscal year 2017 to give you time to work on it to be completed for 2018. If you waited to the next year, you would only have, you know, six months. This would give you a year, a year and a half. So that was just something I wanted to put on here for thought, um, to start thinking about on whether the, the planning board wanted to move forward with that. And I will do some more research, but this was just, um, discussion points for tonight.
Uh, you know, my personal feeling is that of these items on the list, that would probably be the last on my priority list personally. Um, I think it's really important that we get that, to get the open space definition and process and that section of the bylaw codified and, and clarified. And, um, Mimi, I don't know, do you wanna speak to that at all? As far as, we're talking about warrant articles for 2016 and the open space piece. Um, that's something we've been working on and.
You know, and another thing too, uh, something that we'll work on, and I know that we've, um, met in the past, um, is that 61A process, but that's, that's something else that we need to work on. So again, as.
Either open space process or 61A process require authorization from the town meeting? I think we could do that amongst the boards and hold a public hearing and just say this is the.
60, 61A typically doesn't. It's just a process that you put in place.
In-house process.
An in-house process. And usually it starts with the assessors notifying the Board of Selectmen and Board of Selectmen notifying various groups. So that's a, a, a town process.
We were also looking at updating the code itself.
Relative to the definitions.
Right.
And requirements for open space.
Right.
Yes. I agree with Jessie that that should be top priority.
Okay. All right. Anything else that's missing from this? Or, I mean, I was looking at our goals that we've discussed back in August, so, um.
It's, um, coincidental, but, uh, just in the last week, including this morning, I was approached by, uh, residents, uh, asking if we were going to address and, um, clarify the open space. And my response was that it was, um, being worked on and that it is a high priority. And that's as far as I went. But I think, um, this is, you know, this is October and there's time to step on the gas and, um, put something together. Even if it isn't, you know, a hundred percent, uh, if it's some form of improvement or clarification, it'll be better than what we have.
I, I mean, I would think we would wanna have a public hearing fairly early, Dawn, to make sure this has been aired out publicly.
Absolutely. Yep.
So I don't know, do, do we wanna talk about a, a timetable at this point?
Well, we don't, we don't have Phil here, so Phil was part of it. We, we had met just two weeks ago, Mimi, Phil and I. Um.
So let's put it on the November 5th as a update, to update the, ourselves and the public relative to, um, the open space zoning language.
I mean, I just get a little nervous. I have a feeling April's gonna come very quickly.
I'll put a timeline together of what's required of when the warrant has to be, you know, warrant articles have to be in and hearings and warrant closes. I'll put that together.
A second committee was supposed to be working, um, concerning, um, the Economic Development Committee and what we would be doing to, um, create that. And that was a, a priority as well. Now, I haven't received any phone calls asking me if I was available or not. So has, do we have a timeline for when Andrew's available to work on this?
Every date that I, that Dave McKay is available, Andrew's not and vice versa. So the last email, and we don't call you all the time because we keep going back and forth between the two of them. Um, we now have about five dates, so you'll be getting a call probably in the next day or two with, can you make it on any of these dates? It's been.
I'm out tomorrow morning.
It's been extremely difficult trying to coordinate this meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to, 'cause I mean, we had agreed on two things and.
Right.
It's like, it's falling by the wayside. We've been trying since late August to get together.
Yes.
So if there's nothing else, um, what I would suggest is we take the things that we have to sign, put them over there on the table.
I forgot about that.
And then, um, we can do that, um, but.
Can we adjourn first?
We can adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Very good. Thank you.